Good morning. Welcome to the September 10, 2019 Public Hearing Agenda. Commissioner Lawrence Cogcio, Commissioner Paul Rolle, Commissioner Tyler, Vice Chair Glenn, Commissioner Aaron, Commissioner Jason, Commissioner Trent, Commissioner Spencer, Commissioner Goss, Commissioner Yostas, Commissioner Lafferty, Commissioner Paul Burtz.
Good morning. I want to take up to introduce you to a new member of our staff, Anthony Faber. He's the director, our new Director of Government Affairs, to us from City Hall, where he was the senior intergovernmental liaison. He really knows the Mandu Street and the R. City and all of the plans. And has also worked for the Economic Corporation. And also as a master of planning, so there's a lot of expertise that we're really excited to have.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners, welcome back. We're going to start today's public hearing agenda with hearing items. The first is item number one, LPC 190-38950, an application for a certificate of appropriateness number of Brooklyn Block 195, Block 173 Bergen Street, in the form of a store bedroom, Row House Building, 1769, item number one. The application is to construct rear yard additions.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Melissa Darity, and we're going to be presenting 173 Bergen Street, which is block number LPC 190-38950. The project site is located on the north side of Bergen Street, between Baum Street to the east and White Street to the west, in the Doran Mill Store District. The proposed work consists of constructing a two-story rear yard addition at the basement and reverse floor. This block plan shows the height, massing, and location of other rear yard additions on the block. As you can see, there are 15 other rear yard additions present that range between 4 stories and varying depth. This is not the majority of the block, which is required for several. This existing elevation and rear facade photo on the left show the elements that will be removed as part of rear additions construction. As noted on this drive, the existing basery to be removed will be salvaged and saved to be incorporated and used on the new addition along with the new basery to match the existing. On the right, we have the proposed elevation drive with a proposed penetration, which includes two sets of sliding glass doors, as well as a deck extending from the first floor and a deck on top of the addition at the second floor. Here we have an axonometric view showing the proposed addition, which gives you a better view of the massing in-depth proposed. As you can see, the addition will line up exactly with the existing addition present at the adjacent property at 175 Bergen Street. Here we have an existing building section. And here we have the proposed building section showing the addition. And here we have the existing basement and first floor plans. And here we have the corresponding proposed plans for those floors, plus the proposed second floor plan to show the new deck, which will be built on top of the addition. Here are some photographs showing existing conditions of the two adjacent properties at 171 Bergen and 175 Bergen. As mentioned, there's a similar addition in terms of size already present at 175 Bergen, which is actually on the left. The labels are mixed up here, so 171 Bergen is actually shown on the right. The details for the two sliding doors that will be at the basement and first floor of the addition's rear facade are shown here. They will be identical in length, but will slightly vary in height. Here we have photos showing the existing conditions of the subject property's rear yard. And on the bottom, we have photos showing the existing conditions of other rear yard additions present on the block. Here we have a few more photos showing the existing conditions of the surrounding block and the other rear yard additions present within it. As you can see, all 15 existing additions are key to the block map in the first slide. And here we have other views showing the existing conditions on the surrounding block. These photos also demonstrate the lack of visibility of the area of work and confirm that the proposed addition will not be visible from any point on the surrounding streets. The architect on the project, Sarah Jeffries, Sarah Jeffries Architecture and Interior Design, is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Very clear presentation. Are there questions? At this point, I'll go to the public. Is there any moment in the public wishing to give just a moment? That's for a long pause before closing the hearing. Second discussion. Pretty straightforward. Seen this film before. Very straightforward, okay. In the matter of document number 190-38950, 173 Bergen Street, in the Doran Mill Store District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that building size, materials, details, and most features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Doran Mill Store District. I recommend approval, noting that the work will not naturally eliminate any architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public power of care, that the rear addition will not rise to the full capacity, thereby maintaining the sense of the building's original massing, that other rear yard additions of similar height with a similar footprint existed on the block, including the adjacent property at 175 Bergen Street, and that the rear addition will be similarly designed and feature salvage brick plating and multi-light windows and will maintain the building's scale and character as individual row houses. Anthony Faber?
Aye.
New post? Just passes. As opposed to a committee, Commissioners, I forgot to tell you that the committee award is unanimous.
Item number two, LPC 20-00145, an application for a certificate of appropriateness number of Brooklyn Block 614, Block 22, 22 Bank Street, Village Village Store District. A pre-provoked slash voucher provided by Row House Building, 2445. The application is to construct the third floor at an existing rear extension.
Good morning, Commissioners, and the staff inside of Mr. Richard Bank Street, located on the south side of Bank Street, intersection of Waverly Place and the Village Village Store District. The addition is to construct a 1-story apartment with an additional level of roof railings and existing two-story brick basery rear extension. Green painted projected wood bay was previously approved in the second floor rear facade. Aaron, will you be in charge of the partners and events and chief of engineering, the architects are here to present the proposal and to answer any questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah, will you be in charge of the partners? As Richard introduced, the proposal is for 22 Bank Street, which is located on the south side of Bank, between 22 and 1111 Street. It's about four buildings and... Four buildings in the Village Village Place. The building is one of 10 in the neighborhood constructed in 1844. Proposal is to add one story to existing two-story extension. On the left is the existing condition, on the right proposed. Existing two-story extension was constructed in 1926, replacing a previously existing T porch on the block. And then, as Richard noted, this was a 1998 extension, so it goes back. And the documentation points to this being a two-story basement first floor extension with a curb on top.
Sorry, can you tell us again where the T porch was?
The T porch was here. You'll see that we have... The old Russell draws on the vocabulary that's for T porches of the block. And there are three important points about the appropriateness here. One is that this does not extend any further than the rear yards, which in this block is particularly lush and lovely. The extension is the same height, equal to or lower than other extensions in the neighborhood. And by drawing on the T porch vocabulary, it's really a carefully designed conversation with the women blocking. There are existing conditions. On the bottom right is the existing two-story extension, basement level, first floor here, and then looking up toward the railing at the second floor. On the left, here is the existing extension, the projecting shed structure from 1998. And then looking west here, you can see that this is... There's a flying wall here, a flying wall in the building beyond, and it's projecting three-story extension to buildings now. And so even when there are three-story extensions with just existing two-story extensions, there are basery walls interrupting the view along the block. So we'll see that in the rear view. The addition will be partially visible through the break in the street wall along Waverly Place. So here we're on Waverly, and that street is here. This building on the corner is the Waverly Inn, the top of Texas, 18 Waverly Place. And so this is one of the incidental views you get in the Village, where there are breaks in the street wall that are really evolved from the changes in the block configuration. And here in the foreground, well, 22 is right here immediately left of the tree, which comes up through this greenhouse structure. The greenhouse is part of the Waverly Inn, and it's about a story and a half. We have rear extensions, two-story rear extensions, differing terraces and then awnings that project along this area of the rear facades. And above that, there's kind of an old corner. So it's a very typical rear yard addition, just having afforded a view in based on the evolution of the site. It's a long-hauling site. Here in Taxodo, you can see the early incarnation of Waverly Inn, which some version of it dates to at least the 1920s on the site. The one-story extension here, I think this is likely the same tree that's coming up through the greenhouse now. And in the distance, you can see a tenant in the corner of the block. And this is that existing three-story extension that you can see from our terrace. So there's always been a union to these blocks. And that sort of rich additive history, of which this is a part, we think creates a good piece for well-considered design that can be visible. So just talk about the T porches and the evolution of the block a bit. Here in the 1862 map, you can see 22 is located here. It's one of the road 10. This is the main line of the T porches extending along the road. The road toward the west has the timber projection of the block, but for the most part, the entire block, both along 11th Street and like is all developed with row houses. By the 1920s, that changes dramatically. There are on the south side of the block, you see a lot of tenants, apartment buildings, and you start to see the evolution of the footprints of the T porches here, where they're being lengthened and increasing height. An important change that happens is that originally these blocks, these blocks along Waverly extended all the way to the mid-block point. Those were subdivided, and two new buildings were constructed in the 1880s, which is what affords that view into the block currently. And so this is 1923. The addition happens in 1926. So you can see that in 1955, you see 22, the new existing two-story extension here. Other extensions that are two-story to this new block here. This is the sort of 1930s. It's three full-story extension there, and the new building is the same. And then today, the current conditions, an analysis of height and production of all of the additions to the block. You see two-story extensions here in varying depths, and are those three-story here, another three-story, and then another one in the urban area. South side of the block has experienced much more change, which a lot of stepped additions appear, four, three, and then two stories. Here are the existing conditions of the block. This is with our block up along the site at 22, and then the railing above, the existing projecting bay there. This is 24 Bank, 26, and 28. This is that 1930s three-story extension on that building. This is a one-to, a one- and two-story extension, but has a full-height basery wall that separates it from number 24. And then there are flying walls here. So there's lots of screening that happens along the course of the road. And then here's a better view looking at the factory road. This is the east along towards Waverly Place. This is the existing greenhouse with the tree coming up from it. Existing terraces along to the east. And then various forms of screening between each of the terraces at the second floor rising up to the headway of the second floor windows. This is the view of that same, of the building to the east with the backyard of the street. And then just quickly, some thoughts on the T porch design in general. The view looking at the rear of 30, 32, 30, 32, and 34 Bank. My name, Allison, here are the ones with the three-story extension, uh, three-story additions, and then the modified T porches here. And really just thinking about how the T porches have evolved over time. They were replaced early on in many cases. The projection has changed, the height has changed, but there's still something in the vocabulary that lends itself to embracing the rear yards. And it's a very different construction type than the typical basery and rear wall. And that, even without being aware of it, I think that that has continued along the history of all the buildings that have modeled T porches. Nikki Benson, Chief of Shape and Walking through the sensitivity design.
Take your back to my slide. It's interesting. The T porches on the right are those three on the left. Is that all height?
All height, yeah.
Did you say that?
No. In most cases, the way that the history of T porches, it starts with the two stories. The base of the block was open, second story was generally open, and then they evolved over time. They get windows in filled, and then they get more solid fill here as part of like the window and weatherizing, using them as more seasonal, rather than seasonal use.
But what's on the right, garden and apartment level, or are they on the upper and second level?
No, I think this is the garden and the apartment level. Yeah, yeah. I think there's probably, this is some basement here.
Separation wall, each, and each of the party walls, it has a nice element of that at the end of, is that original 20s addition? And you're acknowledging that?
That's part of the...
Good morning. Commissioner, my name is Nikki Benson, Chief of Shape and歩text. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nikki Benson, Chief of Shape and歩text. The proposed designs, the two rear elevations, the existing on the left, as Aaron pointed out earlier, this is existing additions, one-story wood frame, dark communication structure was added, I believe that was in the 1990s. So we're supposed to remove that and our one-story addition will replace that, along the old, the existing two-story, well, basery. We're drawing upon in design the historic precedent of the T porch, T porches which are around the facility, around the R. City and the State office. We are very traditional in design. It's divided like one in the center, basement under operation, divided into three bays with engaged catwalks. This is working with the three-part, like the existing basery openings, and also supporting the next one that we can see in this sort of vision of Row House and the existing T porches of Row House. The materiality, this will all be painted metal in terms of the highlights, the cornice, and the cornice will return back to the rear basery facade. The exception will be the basement, the other sections themselves, which will be painted with, they'll all be painted same color. It's all black or green, it's a dark green, sort of historically appropriate. And also, you can see the painted trim and the other sections will be in the same color. This shows the rear elevation, this is our 2033, in context with the rest of the block size. As Aaron pointed out, the history of revisions to the rear garden facing facade of the century. Here you can see the better course, some additions that were added on. I want to talk about the site on the character of that. In terms of the character of the architecture, we're exploring, we specialize in traditional design, and we were quite sensitive to the sort of nature and character of these things, the historical character to quantify and identify the physicality of the building. This is the existing side elevation on the left, and then the proposed side elevation on the right. We are doing, the proposed materials here are, they're called hardening plank, it's composite material, and that's just like included. On the basis we're using this material, because this is fire rated, we are opening this on the lines. They're pretty flush, we're allowing flush doors, with only a little bit of architectural detail, returning around the sides, that front highlighter, which sort of turns the corner, and it forms those flush corners, all the maximum of this. We're folding the guardrail railing, which will be made of metal, back from the front, basically the point of extension, five units six, so allows to pass plenty of oxygen, stop them, do the railing, and have less imposing presence on that railing on that view for the place. You see this slide previously, this is all together, this is just extent of the extension, the extent of the railing. We are making this identification to the existing center basery, or silver, absolutely both of the cars. The metal railing, they painted like gray. This is so that it will have less of a contrast in the starting background. Again, it's the best ways to minimize the impact of that narrow view of that for the place. And the rest of the addition, the hardening planks on the side, as well as painted metal, that's usually a sample. These are the proposed floor plans. Existing porches. Floor plan of the existing second floor, showing that existing block out, those are the lines. And you can see the proposed addition here. These slides show the full scale of that has been constructed on site, and that orange building is charging, and the orange is a little white, and then there is a different color of the markers that has been railing. And this slide on the right shows the three, if you remember, of the same, you know, existing as the massing color of the houses there. So the different view order, where again, you can see the construction many coming up above that green house group of Waverly Inn, and the corresponding rear models of the same view, standard visual.
I can summarize a couple of points about the sensitivity, Commissioners. And just to quickly go back, this is an existing three-story T porch that is within the block set. This is 245, it's actually 235 West 11th Street. So this is the basement, hardware, and second floor levels of that building there. So there is existing precedent for construction of this type of building in the block. And just in terms of the visibility of what we're seeing here, the view, the addition is really put in with all of the existing operations in the foreground here. So the palette was chosen based on a sort of seasonal view. We have eight months of tree cover here, and we thought that the green actually made it pristine a view, better than a light blue. And similarly, in this view, you can see the visibility really just from the peak of the annual over, and then the railings above.
Thank you. Thanks so much. We've got a couple of testimonies. Oh, questions first. For your question, questions. All testimonies, if there is any. So you know, I see close of hearing, second, all favor. Here it's closed. Comment? Do you want to make one? I think I know a comment. Committee board, just calling, there were comments in person and written from neighbors seeking assurance that the addition conforms to regulations and the usual landmark permission practice. Now therefore, they resolve that committee board too, and have recognized approval of this sensitively designed addition. Okay, yeah.
I think the design is really spot on. I think it's a very sensitive design, and somewhat correct of the T porch. What I would be able to approve as an appropriator approach here is to make that extension bring it up as far as the top of the bedo on the existing rear wall, so that it does extend out a bit more porch outward. That 245 West 11th Street, the depth of that addition looks like it's about six feet. And I think if you went out to the beginning of that bedo, you'd actually have a little more. So that's what I...
Keep your walls.
Sorry? Keep the walls.
I see not. Do others want to comment on that specifically? I think we should.
It's not that idea.
So do you have a sense of what that overall depth might be? I mean, that's... Well, unfortunately, we must not be...
This is a funny, a little bit more... Would they read as keep what? That's back to wood.
This is a best court test, that keep working, there is some consistency on the side of the block, it does echo through the original, so I can be sure. There is another three-story addition, put it down, but this section of the block does have some control to it.
Is that able to preserve it?
Maintain that.
In the matter of LPC 2000145, it's 22 Bank Street, Village Store District, a grid confined block, confined style. Row House Building, 2445. The application is to construct the third floor at an existing rear extension. I know the building's... I know the buildings, staff scale, materials and details are moving, which would contribute to the special architectural historic character of the British village historic district. And I recommend approval finding that approval finding that the block is a variety of building types, including tolerant leaning tenements as well as row houses. The proposed work will not really make any significant architectural changes, that the proposed one story addition when combined with existing two story addition would be consistent with rear additions at some of the other houses in the row in terms of number of floors. If that house, if some of the immediate neighboring houses have high side carpets at their existing two story extensions, therefore the presence of the third story on top of the existing addition will not attract from the existing relationship between this house and its immediate neighbors, that the addition will not extend to the top floor of the row house or remain the presence of a rear yard, that the addition will not be visible from a thorough care at a distance and under the use relates context to other rear yard extensions, that the typical materials and simple design of the addition featuring our addition will require a beside facade and metal lube railings will help these elements to be a secondary presence within the street's eight views, that the size from form and design of the proposed addition featuring large windows framed by peers will recall the character of early store additions, sometimes found in houses of a similar age and style with the end of the block historic district. The proposed addition will blend with the surrounding finishes. However, we propose that the extension not extend further than the current portion of the carpet and beside carpet of the extension be.
Paper? Do you oppose? We have approved this application.
Next up is item number three, LPC one nine dash three three eight three five. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the open path block seven twenty lot seven five, four fifty-six west twenty-third street, the Chelsea historic district extension. Italianate style rowhouse called eighteen fifty-seven. Application is for.
Good morning, commissioners, eight thousand thousand housing restoration staff. I will be presenting this application. Sarah Cox, she is the president of the co-op board, will be briefly after presentation and available to answer any questions. The subject of our report is four fifty-six west twenty-third street, located in the nine thousand five hundredths, in the Chelsea historic district. The proposal for you today is to replace windows at the west twenty-third street side. So shown here are the existing additions at the building, you're now coming to the red. All the windows are currently a double hung multi-light window, which was present at the time designation. The commissioner for the end of the existing windows have straight headed on the sashes, however they are installed at segmental arch headed buildings. Again, these are the same windows that were present at the time designation. This is the certain nineteen forties tax photograph shown here. The store windows were a segmental arch headed two over two double hung window at the basement, second, third, fourth floors, with the basement, there's the transoms at the car door. So here are some close up photos of the existing additions and the existing windows. The commission will note that at the interiors of all floors, there is this existing solid finish on the interior and fresh scene here with the panel above the straight headed interior condition. So the proposal for you today is to install a two over two double hung window that matches the configuration, the exception of not matching the segmental arch head. So they're proposing to continue straight headed upper sash condition while matching the two over two configuration. Same thing I've followed before, it will lead to a two over two double hung in lieu of a chipped base step window. Additionally, the proposed material is a fiberglass material, which is a wooden composite. So the proposal would be more repeded, commissioner, to give to the change in the material and also the change in configuration of the sash. Then President of the co-op board will decide to speak briefly and then answer your questions. Good morning, the name is Sarah Cox, President of the co-op board, four fifty-six west twenty-third street. I'm excited, so I'm proposing to place some of our front facade windows, some tangential project, we will also replace the rear windows and do hard to the front and rear facade materials. We would like to have taken into consideration that the event of the arched windows required is a portion to the occupants of the front apartments, which are five families, fearing that construction would require that the windows would be taken out, they would have to be boarded while they were constructed, which would take as much as thirty-six weeks. And also would pose the possibility that owners would have to be, um, the person. It would also entail a very increased budget and as well as a certain time, they're able to get the work done in this season.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Other questions, questions? We've got a public testimony. I believe that Brittany Thomas.
Good morning, Brittany Thomas, Detective Chief of Staff. Given the arch nature of the original windows as shown in the historic tax photographs, it's clear that the windows on the south are intended to have arch tops. As such, HTC does not find the installation of windows without arch tops appropriate here. We suggest that the applicant can conduct further research into the original arch windows and complete to work with staff in order to ensure that the appropriate arch top windows are returned.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? The community board says the following. The board suggests that the commission research establish the actual or likely original design of four fifty-six's windows and require that it be matched, including arch tops containing the vision of blazing lights and frame and sash profiles. We leave it to the commission to determine whether the proposed forty percent wood fiber material would constitute a match for original wood, if such is required. Community board four feels that the ability of the proposed material to match original frame and sash profiles as effectively a solid wood is the overall, um, considering actual. I guess they didn't really vote, which is given the status. Okay, at this point, I think we can ask for a review to be closed. The motion? One second. All favor? Please close and have discussion.
Can we hear from the staff as far as to tell? And what was there as far as?
Well, I think you made a case for it, breaking up what was there originally and then what it's been for a long time, I think.
We have the evidence of the photograph, which again will show second arch head with two over two configuration.
Do we know when it was changed though?
Uh, we do not. We know that the addition at time of designation is shown here. It's a little bit dark, but it is something that's a bit probably. These are the windows. The applicant spoke to, uh, had a solid restoration being done at the time of this project. We do intend to install windows at once on the sash.
So at the time of designation, we have the windows that are currently there.
It's very hard. There's no way, yes, that is correct. Like I said, it's a bit dark here, but you can see the panel condition here.
But the original condition is orange. Is there a comment on the, somebody come out on the window issue?
Just one more note on the window configurations. By my count, there are nine buildings in this row, I believe. And at this time, four of them appear to have second arch tops, but they don't all have the time of designation, so assuming some staff have an intention to replace the nine in one, just with the second arch windows. So at this time, something that four of them have, second arches, one has some of both, the major, apple exterior, or tall house second arches, so something about half of it perhaps. As for the material, that is a sort of pulverized wood vinyl composite, who has a neutral colored finish. Staff has approved that in the past for buildings that are allowed to qualify for substitute materials, are not required to have a wood material and found with a finish that's possibly a paint finish, particularly as judged from the sidewalk. But again, it's all that doesn't, is not a true on staff. For a small block like this, we'll refer to first materials we brought in, that it has a two or three configuration. We know, staff has approved in the past. I think the commission may now as well for having this, having the windows for appearance reasons. But the other, only thing I would just add, I think the owner, the co-op member was implying that there was no other solution to replacing the windows with arch tops, short of pulling on the whole frame, blocking, or expensive. But we have seen insertments from various manufacturers that do have second arch tops that would be installed in more or less the same.
Crosses that stop.
It's an interior stop that looks like it would be moved and exposed.
And it's got to rip out the stuff.
Yeah, they would have to use the interior, but that's, that's common with most of this building.
And what about the timing of it? She was suggesting that it takes four to six weeks to block that windows.
Yeah. It looks unfair to me, but I've heard cases where you guys do that, of course. But it's not, it doesn't, it's in a lot of the proposed by the.
Why don't you keep going, let us know how.
I could, uh, I'd really like to learn about material. I think it's a solid product, not a hollow product. Sounds like that's really solid.
It's a clad, it's a cladded material, so it's this cladding over a different substrate back. I think it's akin to aluminum clad.
It's vinyl clad over pressed wood and stuff.
So it has extruded sort of flat tops.
Yeah.
Sorry, which is what we've approved with the rim type of this.
Let me revise my thought there. I can't really write drawing shows and extruded hollow window that I think would not be appropriate. I think that if, I think I did propose to having it be a wood clad material or any of this clad with double material has a decent, looks like it's going to last, but I think a hollow, hollow plastic product is likely to, it's possible to be great with these, it's possible to bend, curl over time. So I think that, I think that this particular substitute material would not be something that I would support it. I think it would be, I, arch top as an appearance on the exterior is important for this very uniform row. Therefore, I think that the windows should have arch appearance on the exterior. If they want to do a square headed window, an arch kind of blocking at the front, that would be hidden by the facade, that would be visible to the exterior, the interior, I think that would be.
Do you think it's possible to keep the interior sockets back where they are? And apply the window.
Depends on how it's made, the pods are, by the time you're done, it's easier to take that.
It's possible to tie it in the next year. That's what I was. Again, it's not genetic. We're going to try to do a row, that's why it's something six there, not just hollow.
Probably might go down, it's a lot of good cheap wood.
Yeah, I think the internal arch appearance is incredible, especially since there are others in this row that have been placed in this consistent row of townhouses. But I think that's just you have the segmental sort of trim on the outside, this for the window, the interior.
I'm just a little bit hesitant, you know, a little bit to require the under, it was something that was not there. Designation, it's something that is designated.
We require that.
That's the answer. Okay, well, I think it's pretty clear that people are requiring a different window type, not necessarily proposed with the solid wood clad windows and with the second two arch. So.
Good morning, LPC nineteen two three eight five, four fifty-six west twenty-third street, in the Chelsea historic district extension. One of the buildings, I ask you, I'm sure you guys need to have some wonderful features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea historic district extension. There are only two old qualifications, one of the existing windows are now original to the building and therefore the door cannot remain as a particular power. That the proposed windows at the basement and second floor floors closely match the historic double hung windows in terms of operation, configuration, finish, that the proposed windows of color floor, if they keep in the operation and configuration, the windows of color floors is always a double hung windows with fixed overlay transoms found at the buildings in the row. And that the proposed work will not distract from the special architectural historic character of the building in the Chelsea historic district extension. However, I found that the straight headed sash does not match the historic segmental arch and sash and therefore diminishes the relationship of this building to the unmarked buildings within the row and that the profiles and details remain unresolved. Therefore, I recommend that the windows include segmental arches and that the profiles and details, the mountains and rivers be upon in consultation with staff, that the material studied in consultation with staff includes solid six three.
All favor?
Hi.
Do you oppose? I'm approving this, nobody.
Good evening to item number four, LPC one nine dash three nine nine two seven. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the open path block eleven nine eight box one five, two forty-one central park west and northwest side, central park west historic district. Our deco style apartment building designed by Schwartz and Gross, building in thirty thirty quarters. Application for all tour window. Successful.
Good morning, commissioners, for the reason for the staff. The item number is chief of the door on Central Park West, is Upper West Side, Historic District, and the only source of non-public requests in Central Park West. The proposal is to create an accessible entrance on West East Street, by lowering the middle of this window and installing a light metal door into the shop. The applicant is also proposing to ruin this side light and still be opening with a certain tile salvage. The building's main entrance on Central Park West features stairs and vestibules, so the applicant believes that creating a second entrance on West East Street side makes the best solution for creating area free access. Any other questions or comments?
We'll go to public testimony.
Good morning, commissioners, I'm Pascal Navi. I'm here with Landmark West. Landmark West's appropriateness committee believes accessibility to our landmarks. In this instance, the committee felt that making the changes designed for a ground level daughter's office might make sense with the proposed design, but as a main entrance with mobility and pair of residents, it does not provide dignity and equity for everyday use. The Landmark West's appropriateness committee supports accessibility and hopes this can be achieved at the on-grade, dormant, served entrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark Diller.
Good morning, commissioners, Mark Diller, Chair of the Preservation Committee of Community Board Seven. Our full board and our committee endorse this proposal. You are removed by the fact that some of the historic fabric that exists in the existing window will be repurposed to infill the side light window that would be eliminated in this proposal. And at full board, we actually noted because if you look at the, that's actually a good slide, if you look at that slide, you see that the side light window in question is actually a bit closer to the main window than all the rest on that facade, suggesting without any procedures to back it up, so it's best thinking, that the, that this configuration has already been modified from the original. ADA accessibility always requires compromise in buildings that were not intended for and were not anticipated in the first place. We share the view that the main entrance for this building should continue to be the ornate and beautiful one on Central Park West. It is, however, part of the original design of the architect that the main entrance lobby is, I think, three or four steps down from grade, creating a logistical problem for the interior that would make using that as a accessible entrance either impossible or impractical. And that is one of the reasons why we were convinced that a side entrance is appropriate in this instance. We had extensive testimony in committee about this application, but it didn't involve the design itself or the reuse of the fabric. It had to do with the fact that, like a lot of other places on the Upper West Side, there are schools that occupy sunned streets and create untenable congestion at various times of the day. I'm glad to say that at tonight's committee board set of transportation committee, so we very frankly took all this testimony out of preservation and included with another committee. There will be an application to put a loading zone or no standing zone in front of the ADA entrance so that accessory can reach the curb without further adding to what is an untenable situation on that block. So all in all, we, we supported this as appropriate to the, to the service.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much for coming and giving us the nuance behind the resolution itself, which I will now read just for the record. So this is the committee board seven, full board. Therefore, because all committee board seven in Manhattan approves the application to convert the existing pair of windows into an ADA compliant entrance, including reusing a portion of the historic fabric displaced by the enlargement, one of the windows to infill a portion of an existing window as reasonably appropriate for the character of the historic history. Unless there's further testimony. Nope. Did you ask for your hearing to close? Ah, would the applicant like to respond?
To the testimony.
Landmark West suggested this would not be appropriate. If you want to respond, it'll be your right.
Actually, the question, the question is whether the accessibility inside entrance is something that needs or requires an ADA, meaning a primary light entrance. Are you hoping anyone in the building department or are, or will head or anyone to make sure that it's a department?
I am hoping to go ahead. They may or may not be required for waiver, or the department consultant. This is something, even say, really is pre-existing, and this is a secondary entrance added to the terrace. But we will be, when we apply to DOB at that transparent conversation, I feel, our association at Washington is in contact with. They have no problem with the location of the entrance. They'll make some comments about better physical access from that location that they probably point that out. Just the arrows for the rivers back home.
Yes.
They brought up some very concerns, and everyone are that, first of all, probably they are on this list, this person here should actually show me the opposite correction that we're, so we have, we're inclined. We also are intending moving all of this, this is left over from existing construction. We could make use of it, but to have better, it's a great shot, it's a lobby, or a wheelchair. We will, we remove this, maybe relocate it, and, 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 and that was their comments. I think they were very good comments, and we would take those into consideration.
At this point, I think we can ask the jury to be closed. Second, all favor.
I have.
What's comments?
I, I think it's completely appropriate. I realize it's all checks on the, on the original buildings, however, it is, this is actually a much simpler solution than you've seen and much less intrusive than you've seen before. Thanks.
And I agree, and also, we, Norm very often recommend that a side entrance be used on historic buildings because the effect on the primary entrance system is very difficult. And I think this is a very, very accessible and attractive entrance. I think it's practical, and it's very, so I have a draw to you.
In matter of certificate for that, I'm hoping this, LPC 1938784, 570 Columbus Avenue, sorry. Sorry. In matter of certificate for that, I'm hoping this, LPC 193127, 241, Central Park West, Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District. The architect was so, according to some of the Schwartz and Gross individuals in 1930, to take a form, application in store, open window to create a regular and accessible entrance. I recommend, you know, that the size, scale, materials, and details of this building among the features contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District. I recommend for both finding and working with the property to create access to buildings as simple as possible, that the proposed side operations include removal of around the window and portions of the historic love, not containing the existing, most of the love of the opening. That the existing historic opening operational to building is not part of the regular transcription pattern, and is not common with the opening structure. If the proposed new multi-black metal and stone store, to the great finish of the long history of the windows throughout the facade, the portion included in the same from the public history opening, will be self-evident, so the basis of the model of the opening is a historic fabric. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building by the Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District.
Second, I have a favor. Any votes?
Okay, next is item number five. This is LPC 19-38784. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the row of Manhattan, block twelve, eighteen, five thirty-six, 570 Columbus Avenue, the Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District. Renaissance by the side flats building designed by Jacob H. Valentine, built in eighteen ninety-three and ninety-four. The application is to install here.
Good morning, commissioners, including preservation staff. The application is to install a area free access ramp at the southern north storefront bay of five seventy Columbus Avenue, which is a Renaissance by the side flats building designed by Jacob H. Valentine, built in eighteen ninety-three, eight twenty-four, and located between West eighty seventh street and West eighty eighth street, the Upper West Side, Central Park West, Historic District. The proposal before you today does not need staff level rules for review, because staff level requires a straight front ramp, and this includes a slip platform that switches back to fit within the constraints of the historic building. So here is the existing condition with the step here, and it's a rendering show of the proposed ramp.
Okay, great.
So this, as you will see, the restaurant next door has a sidewalk cafe, and you can see this is sort of the, 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 so they are trying to fit in the ground needed within the, 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 the lines.
It's possible to take out some of the height of that step by cutting into it closer to the door.
Yes. So he architec did a pretty thorough analysis of what would happen were that step to be lowered, and it's still the, the ramp needed, very adequate slope to lead into, majority of the retail space of the tenant is, that is being serviced, but the ramp is planning to stay in this space.
I was talking about the space between the door and the, and the front of the building as opposed to cutting in. I recognize that the interior is very small, but there's about a foot and a two feet of space there you can start smoking down already outside the door.
Sure. I will, I will.
The entire shit, I thought it was just a question.
And so I will.
So we'll have our. Just, sorry, I'm going to use my name. Yes, just to speak to that idea. The front door is set back, it's probably over three feet from the property block. So lowering that step by some, some, some distance, I'd say, if you could blow this out, three or four inches, you might say three or four feet of ramp. However, I still don't believe there would be enough. If you accept the, the constraints on the sidewalk, that, that, where it is, don't believe there would be enough distance to so far out and make an appropriate turn. You did not study that, you said.
If, if that were true, the ramp itself could stay within the constraints of your storefront and sidewalk, it's still, if it hit right at the edge of that, it would still require the architect using that then to, to be within the technicals of a sidewalk cafe. But I think, given that, yes, the committee board disapproves this, we should, I think we should ask you to study that and see if that works.
The other, just, I'm, 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 I'm,
Next is Brittany Thomas, Inspector HGC.
Brittany Thomas, Inspector HGC Council. HGC certainly understands the necessity and desire for access ramps, but wonders if there is not a more temporary solution such as a ramp that can be brought out on an as-needed basis that can be utilized in this instance. The proposed area-free access ramp will be an immovable sidewalk intrusion. HGC recommends that the applicant take cues from the outdoor seating area at the restaurant next door and explore more flexible, non-performing ramp options. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Mark Diller.
Good morning Commissioners, Mark Diller, Chair of the Preservation Committee of Community Board Seven. And as I mentioned in a previous application, we fully support and understand that compromise is a part of making historic buildings a gate, compliant, or a piece of reasonable foundation. I want to start by saying that the application and drawings before you are different than the ones that were presented to us. This is a natural evolution. There's nothing sinister about it. But the application which we disapprove called for a single turn of the return of the ramp to come perpendicular from the facade building into the sidewalk. The virtue of it is that it would more or less, but not completely, align with the outdoor cafe of Cafe de la Luna, which were then, by the way. The, yeah, for summer. But that's only half the year. It is an unclosed outdoor cafe. So for half the year, we would have, and of course, the photographs that are being shown have sidewalk bridges, which kind of makes it a little hard to read what's going on here. The idea of complete return is actually something that was quoted at our Preservation Committee meeting over the summer. We invited the applicant to return to us with a modified design. They declined, I assume, for timing reasons, and so it's before you. So I can't actually offer you a completely on-point disapproval. We are deeply concerned, and I think that you've heard already here through the testimony, but there may be other options. If I may add some more burdensome nuance, my understanding is that this is a situation where there's already a lawsuit involved. So the opportunity to get by with an on-demand ramp is actually not compliant with ADA. And so I'm pretty sure that while they might have gotten away with that if they hadn't been attacked by what I understand to be predatory ADA compliance hawks, that ship may have sailed here. So we need to do something that is compliant with ADA or reasonable accommodation. The complete return is obviously a burden on a storefront that we approved and you all approved a few years ago, including this very important recessed entranceway, which, as I've heard the questions in testimony, could be used to begin to mitigate the rise that's necessary to gain access. I'll use the last ten seconds to say that I always support the idea of not requiring the applicant to do that within the frame of the store because it's just too darn small. So for those reasons, we actually have a resolution to disapprove, but you may look past it or reconsider it because it doesn't apply to what you're being seen, what's being seen now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not unless I will still read that as approved law. Again, thanks for the nuance. Therefore, the result, the Community Board Seven, and then this approves the application to install a regulated component ramp that occupies the entirety of the space in front of the storefront and projects perpendicular into the pedestrian travel or should have the sidewalk as not appropriate for the character of historic district. Personally, I would say that the current scheme... Any more questions? Anybody? Would you like to respond? If you'd like to further?
Just one other thing from staff and rules perspective. If any reduction in this ramp that will eliminate that return, even with availability, some of it doesn't meet the criteria of the staff.
So if you could eliminate the return?
That's correct. So if you were to make approval here, it could be with the modification of the work with staff to do just that, try to reduce the length, the length of the return feasible, but that cannot happen. Again, what we see for this is to be an optional. But again, they could take a little action if they do it in staff.
So you're suggesting we approve?
You could approve it with the modification of that. This is appropriate only if there's not an option that based on the ramp. Less lengthy or...
A couple of months. It's suggested, I'm able to understand, just like one message is new for one. I prefer that you come back, you study these options and come back with the approval. Okay, so there's several options on the table that we have suggested that you have to study thoroughly and act with. We'll hear you very quickly if you can turn it around quickly. Thank you.
Okay, moving to the next item. This is verse six, help me see one nine dash two six three seven seven. An application for certificate of appropriateness of a rowhouse, block twelve eighteen, block twenty-four. One twenty-three West eighty-seventh Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West historic district. A new brick style rowhouse is advised increase number now to build in eighteen ninety-three, eighteen forty. The application is to install ballast rods, reinforced base doors. I agree the second item, these will be presented at the same time, but they are separate items. Item number seven, help me see one nine dash two six three seven eight. An application for certificate of appropriateness of a rowhouse, block twenty-eight, block twenty-four. One twenty-five West eighty-seventh Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West historic district. Also, a new brick style rowhouse is advised increase number now to build in eighteen ninety-three, eighteen forty. The application is to install reinforced ballast rods, cylinders, and base doors.
Good morning Commissioners, Elizabeth Fagan, Preservation Staff. As Corey mentioned, both items one twenty-three and one twenty-five, West eighty-seventh Street, are not presented together. These two rowhouses are located on the north side of West eighty-seventh Street between Columbus and Amsterdam, avenues on the Upper West Side, Central Park West historic district. The proposal before you today is to remove the existing metal railings at the stoops and install new GFRC ballast rods and dual posts. The second part of the proposal is to replace doors at the floor-to-floor entrances. The Commissioners are reviewing these items today because the proposed GFRC material and proposed replacement doors do not meet the rules for staff approval. Here you can see the historic cast photos of the block. And the applicant is proposing to replace the existing iron rails at the stoops with new GFRC dual posts and ballast rods that will be painted black and are to recall the existing cast iron dual posts and ballast rods at number one nineteen, West eighty-seventh Street. This building was constructed by the same architect at the same time. The height of the installation is proposed to be a few inches taller than the railings at number one nineteen. The applicant is also proud sample of the proposed material here. At the parlor floor, the existing exterior historic doors were made at number one twenty-five on the left. And at number one twenty-three, you can see here, the existing panel wood doors were installed without LPC permits. And the applicant is proposing to replace the doors at both buildings with panels double leafed doors with a single panel grid at each leaf. So in summary, the Commissioners are reviewing this item today due to the use of a substitute material at the stoop and for the proposed installation of the floor-to-floor doors, which do not match the configuration of the historic floors. And the applicant is very interested, Commissioners.
Are there any questions?
My question was, are the current railings original? Can I put it all back in the presentation?
No, the original, the rails that are there now, one twenty-five and one twenty-three are now original.
They're close.
They were replaced a long time ago, before tax caps actually created it. If you look at the actual, I follow that. But the, there's a clinch at the bottom that actually matches the one in one nineteen, the white building. These houses were all built at the same time. They had the same clinch bottom that they received. So, this is one nineteen. This is the one right next to where some shoes have happened and the casing has taken down. And then these are two of the flashboards we're talking about, but they have the same exact details of what we have on the floor.
So you would be replicating?
Essentially, one nineteen.
Right, and they don't still exist?
Yes. They're a cast iron. We actually look at what is cast iron, cast aluminum, and we can really predict the consequences. The iron is driven across. And the energy is actually very close to match with the cast iron book. It's a non-creational, it's a...
Any questions? We'll go to the testimony. Pascal Gabu.
Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the applicant's detailed drawing package. It is wholly possible that when these rowhouses were completed in their AB/AD configuration, that some elements were modified for budgeted or to find a test. Following precedent that follows the same DNA of the time and period, but bringing it up to modern day safety code of possible materials is a logical choice and a believable one. By competing two at the same time, it's as if we are in the same vein of discussions of one hundred and thirty-five years ago. These interventions will enhance the landmarks and continue in their presence of confidence while complementing the rest of the original road. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee fully supports these applications.
Thank you. Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, HGC. While HGC has no concerns regarding the proposed floor replacements, it's difficult to determine the appropriateness of the stoop, ballast rods, and dual posts without a more thoroughly detailed explanation of the proposed materials. You cannot be certain of the appropriateness of these internal materials without a more in-depth description and assurance of their quality.
Thank you. Diller.
Good morning Commissioners, Mark Diller, Chair of the Preservation Committee of Community Board Seven. We also support this application for a number of reasons. Let's take them piece by piece. And there is a little bit of a detail here, which is that at committee, what we were presented with was that the replacement ballast rods would be approvable at staff level and it was only the fact that they were being raised four inches that was the discretionary approval that was put before. Staff is the issue that was presented to us. Thankfully, our resolution and our discussion took beyond that so that we are comfortable in recommending the entire package to you, not just the four inches. With respect to the four inches, what I will say is that by increasing the clinch height of the ballast spurs and dual posts, they preserve the proportions of those elements as they go off the stairway so that they will look, so the only effect is that the handrail will be, by my understanding, correct, at twenty-eight inches high instead of twenty-four inches high. And twenty-four inches does strike me as a little on the low side, so that seems like a sensible and appropriate thing to do. Smopping out the cast iron or wrought iron for a stone-like invention also struck us as thoroughly appropriate to this beautiful row. This is a wonderful row of intact townhouses and that we approved by these modifications. With respect to the doors, we, the most pristine appropriate answer would be to try to preserve the doors at one twenty-five because those are the ones that have the outer door glass panels. Probably is that through previous modifications. As you typically know, typically there was divested, glass doors on the outside and then more protective doors on the inside. And that arrangement on one twenty-five has been lost over the years. Forcing them to use a glass panel door in a neighborhood that is much safer than that, but still is a little bit complicated, is, strikes me as instructive as a report as not being appropriate in terms of how to preserve the landmark and actually have someone deliver it. And so by, so the application is to replicate a design that has previously been approved and that's, so a little bit of a compromise, but it makes perfect sense in this instance to improve the doors as well as consider cost. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll read for the Commissioners the resolution from Community Board Seven. It states, therefore, the result, the Community Board Seven, and then approves the application, A, to use the replacement, to use the replacement cast concrete side rails to match the existing model on the block and replicate the original appearance of the dual post on the block installed at a height of four inches above that of the model as appropriate to the character of historic district. And B, to replace the doors with wood doors similar in style and arrangement to other existing doors on the block for security reasons as reasonably appropriate to the character of historic district. Anyone else? Yes. Christabel, I saw you, did I pass you over? I'm sorry, Andrew. I'm going to hear your testimony.
Chris Puckoff, Brothers Society of the Architecture of the City. These items raise policy questions. The proposal before you is a cosmetic facade change replacing stupid rails. There is no compelling need to do this. It is not to be compared, for instance, to stabilization of the bench in the same building that could be lost or replacement construction of windows. Generally, the Commission encourages restoration using materials incoming at street level which here would be as iron, formerly as iron railings. But the applicant is asking to create a dilution of probably formal conditions likely modified using fiber reinforced concrete. The reason given is that using a substitute would save seventy-five thousand dollars on a steel. The letter of the law would offer the possibility of a hardship application or an argument with this plan. In that case, the applicant would need to open his financial records and demonstrate his capability to make a reasonable return on investment. We can only guess at the financials here, but it is a matter of public record that the two houses were purchased and assembled fifteen years ago by an LLC for a total of well over twelve billion dollars, perhaps less than they're worth today. And the potential saving requested hovers around one percent of that value. It is certainly unclear that the cost of cast iron would be over the hit for this case and in any case, the change is optional. In the years before the district was desiccated, the West Side was regarded as a tough place reported by the Amos where people lived in poverty, the scene of the musical West Side Story. It is not like that anymore. How great pseudo-reparation need not be approved on practical or humanitarian grounds. The rail should be replaced with as iron or metal as they are. And I must add that I am astonished to hear the previous testimony because I believe all of these people oppose that level group of GFRC of the lower level of historic buildings at that level. Apparently now it's all right.
Thank you. Any others wishing to testify? The judge, the partner, everyone. This one would ask the court of hearing to motion in a second. All in favor?
I just wanted to, sorry, I want to thank the testimony. This is not a harsh application because there's nothing inappropriate for someone proposing something on the cost region provided that that's not the decision for the citizen. An application before you, that's totally stated in the application, this is a substitute material that matches the appearance and feel and finish and details of the cast iron therefore you've been appropriated substitute for. The fact that the rules, as you all decided, there are rules provisions, the staff can't approve it. That's sort of irrelevant to this discussion. But the application before you is not based on clause. It's based on an argument that the proposed material appropriate in that, you know, recalls, matches, the details, finish, et cetera, of the cast iron. But you agree that, Christabel reminding us that we should not be taking into account the cost issues. Correct. That's right. The cost issue is not, is not the most important. It's not, it's not an issue you should be considering if you're looking.
And perhaps another, I was unclear whether existing rails are deficient in some way and must be replaced or is this discussion?
So the two houses, different, one twenty-five, the two houses to the left, it's a future photograph to be built in a stupid car, so it's completely efficient. So that maybe has to be replaced. The one on the right is some way to this one.
Okay, thank you. Alright, at this point, anyone?
So, just one more. First up. When or how will we very much replace cast iron with GFRC?
Well, I think one distinction would be that the cast iron in this case doesn't exist. So, the distinction would be when it exists and one wants to replace it with in kind of material. I think you all have a good understanding personally. It's missing, and someone's voluntarily giving something back that they don't have to. But to answer the question, yeah. The Commission has approved GFRC for new cast iron elements in certain buildings in certain locations. Most often, I would say, because it exists. But especially on the base of buildings, certain for cast iron buildings, you all most always do consider, want to see cast iron replaced in the house. So, I think there is a distinction between the two. The Commissioners have approved GFRC for cast iron in mass for certain companies. And do you agree? They give the aren't a municipal building. There's a lot of elements that may be at the second floor. Maybe the first one has a master GFRC. The cast iron would have a smaller scale buildings. It's hard to say how it comes. Really hard. But I do want to also point out, because what's existing, unless that works in a significant fabric, if this is not the applicant who proposes basically that same iron work or something similar to it, there's no trigger specific to iron work on students that makes one put back to the story, exact historic material. So, if they're kind of presenting an alternate option.
Okay. So, hang on. I'm not discussing costs. There are companies that have been doing cast iron replication. For example, Architectural Arts and Castings in Green Lane, Pennsylvania. He's been doing stuff in New York City for years, and he has all the molds for many of these things. But that aside, the devil here is in the details for me. A) because it's GFRC. I don't have enough information about the details of what this is going to be put together like to be able to improve it. Typically, GFRC has to be separated by at least a half inch soft joint, which is why I'm generally okay with it 20 feet up. But if we have, if we have a new, for example, that's put together with two pieces, it's unlike the cast iron, which can go tight and have caulk in the edges. This will have to have a half inch soft joint that each of those butt ends that will work right up. Same thing with the caps on those, the old safe thing, the railings and the balustrades as well. I mean, this is nice, and the surface is fine, but it's the details, it's those edge details and the cap details that are going to make this easier to work through and just make it look sharp. At this point, I don't have enough information to say, yeah, this is okay.
I'm... I'm pretty well upset. My opinion is coincided with the angle, which is that I agree with GFRC's sample, which is very beautiful. But my reason, the purpose of our general insistence on using materials like cast iron locations at this is that we're not only trying to preserve the appearance of the buildings, but we're also trying to preserve the needs of technical systems that allow these buildings to live the way they live. And I think that even if everything is done in the way it is usually, it's perfect. There's something to be said for situation strengthening of the technologies, parts generally used in these sort of buildings that this Commission is putting very hard at, I think. We should look at very carefully before we switch off the side of the mode favor in this case. The A would be version two.
Well, it's... I think it's harmful obviously to restore this search and appearance. It's not, I think, it's only rather than proof of. I am concerned about particularly what Michael Dontrichus said, because if it weren't really an exact replica, I might feel much better, easier. It might, I might feel better about approving it. We might end up with a moment of doing one at this point, because they don't have to, as I was saying. But I do think that the instances where we would approve this material before and have the higher up second floor of cornices, we've got a lot of cornices and situations where maybe weight was a factor or something. So I do have some... Not being sure that you would have really an appropriate appearance is what would be concerned about approving a different material in this case.
I agree with the previous comments about considering using material. We don't have to look at it. That's not this aspect. It does, and also the fact that it is quite, you know, something you touch. Talked about things wrong. Considering for this, such as material.
More about the door. The door is... Let's just be more accurate. I have one thought.
So, I think we should be cast iron and not aluminum. So, that's what we're considering. Obviously, we're hearing, like, that's fine. And the worst part.
Sorry. That's why I'm too... So, I think we have a consensus that the doors are appropriate. But the proposed GFRC rule post rails is not...
So, I think the applicant would like to do a group compartment where you remove the doors and take the lash and cover the railings.
That's just... That's it.
Regarding 123, Doi State says, Street of West Seven, Central District, that they just can install some balistiers and propose to replace doors. I guess we're not going to talk about the letter, the former. But I agree. So, I note that building styles can choose to sell on features that could be the speciality from the sort of access they from site in progress to the district that are from a group compartment. Finding, you mean? Speciality stores were required for the destination of the training station. This is compared to some of the working structure, some of the fabric. Postman approved last second stores, which can be featured closely towards designing the secondary stores, not in a strong line. And the postwork from the type of specialized store that we go to at the site. Such requests to the district. Second, oh, my second.
All in favor? Aye.
Right. And very much the by ways, as it said, to the upper sites in progress to the district. The applications can still speed up, doing the replacement. The... I note again, that building styles can choose to adjust from the features to the speciality from the store character. The upper sites in progress to the district that are... And again, group compartment finding. And the historic store doors, their simple design is something that's official. So, code subject for that. More about the secondary doors there, clearly, because of the solid walls and features. That the postman would have glass in the stores with the same stretch. Finish. Recall the historic design of the secondary stores, the historic block. And that was worth a much better consideration for the character of the building for the upper sites and shoplifts to the district.
Second. All in favor? Any votes? So that's approved for the door doors and door to the house.
Okay, we move to item number eight. This is OPC 19-39529. An application for certificate of appropriate use of the road in that block, 1216, Lot 13. 41 West Eighth Street, the Upper West Side Central Park West District. Clean and style warehouse, designed by John F. Boggs, located in 2001. The application is to replace a stool.
Longly commissioned and great preservation staff. The subject premises is located at 141 West Eighth Fifth Street on the north side of Eighth Fifth Street. Please note that the south side is outside the district and is between Esther and Avenue, Metro and West Side. So, the application is to replace the metal stool in kind. Please note that in the... Let's generally, this tax photo, this has been without metal, Masonry stool since the early 20th century, and metal stool has been in store, our destination. So, just more follow of existing metal stool. This is a whole five. Existing condition of deterioration. Application is to replace the railing, same as existing. Just general view. This log hand just shows a different variety of entrances. Some of the basic three-steps do exist, but some has, many of them have been highly modified. And there's a basic garden entry, and the two metal stools is here. Last, you know, here just shows other metal stool and the following, and I'll be the next one.
So, just a second. Why? Why would this not be considered?
Because there... I mean, you get it more now. It is not... Your back. And that's not... If there was like plated, actual, they'd keep it, but without, without...
The applicant owner at Test Boris, let's see if he can answer any question.
Okay. We'll see if there are any questions. I think this person is clearly set forward. So, we have no questions, so we'll go to the testimony. Pass on the avenue?
Commissioners? Has had? Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee. Recognizes the safety concerns presented by the applicant. In reviewing the law, this landmark and adjacent neighborhood are the only two with steel stool entries. These non-original white miners might soon be released, but do not contribute to the unique sense of the place on the Upper West Side Central Park West District. Arguably detract from it with their industrial diamond pit treads, open back risers, utilitarian rails. Numerous neighbors have embarked on detailed restoration and reconstructions of their stools, including the applicant in the immediately preceding application, which lies just two blocks away. Security fixing and maintaining what his grandfather did once again. Approving or replacement in kind justifies decades of inappropriate design choices and would pose for the potential for similar unfortunate condition to continue next door. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee would support reconstruction of the original stool with the long-term coherence of the block and the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, Service Council. Although the Wacy Street of 141 West Eighth Street had been already removed by 1940s, the building ever shall have had one. One of the goals of Landmark Division is to guide buildings back to a more appropriate state. With that in mind, HGC feels that now is the opportune time to return the original stool to its rightful place as opposed to replacing the existing nonhistoric metal staircase in kind. As there are only two metal staircases on this block, and replacing this particular staircase with an appropriate base in the stool would be a relatively simple process, HGC recommends that the applicant return the stool to its original materiality while it has a wonderfully timed opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Next, Mark Diller.
Good morning Commissioners Mark Diller. I think I'm still Chair of the Committee Board Seven Preservation Committee. The... Returning a... The original condition, of course, the prime result of the vote for here. We were moved to approve this for a couple of reasons. One of which relates to the slide that shows you how many on that block have already been modified by either having a garden entrance or some sort of modified entrance. The other thing that there is... So, two blue middle are this applicant and the one next door. The other thing that moved us to approve this, and there's an amendment that's not to the full board, but didn't make it into the resolution that's in your hands, and that is instead of approving this as reasonably appropriate, we approved it as minimally appropriate, the closest we can get to reflecting the language, the compromise that we feel this is. One of the reasons that moved us to do so, to approve, is that the building next door has a similar cast iron railing system that has recent... There it is. Come on a little further in the distance. That has recently been approved for restoration. I'm not sure why that one did come before appearing this month. Now it does. But today has been a lesson to me in a variety of procedural issues that I'll try to dig to the bottom of. Perfect. So here we are, we have this application in front of us, and while it is clear that restoring it to its original condition would be the correct preservation move, the other one is going to be there. And there is some sense, there is some logic to, if there's going to be one, having two makes neither of them so anomalous. Essentially, though, what the full board voted to do was to approve based on the previous restoration of the month of the West and on the notion that this is better than returning to our level modified entrance. So on that basis, we need to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim, for the nuance. I do agree the resolution, however. Therefore, we resolve that Committee Board Seven Manhattan approved the application to replace in kind existing metal railing on steps for the coral floors reasonably appropriate for the character of this district. Would you like to respond to the other testimony?
Good morning. My name is Francis DeWolff. Though just want to add that, try to story industry, it will also impact the placement of afternoon and evening source of light, skip the staircase, and also, I think, the layout would be good though. I may just add also a small block reading. First time, I have, I have somebody else, I don't have people. So, we need to fast to engage on it.
Thank you. I have a question. Maybe one of the architects could answer. Or, you know... My understanding is we can't have open risers. So I'm wondering if the Department of Buildings actually approved this. Does anybody know a thought about that? If not, I mean, I guess we just approve it as we will if we want to. It may have a DLB issue. I wonder if the applicant would deal with that. And this is an exit, right? It's an immediate sale.
Good morning. Jeff Hyder, Vice President of Contracting. What the... Do you have the writer? The neighbor on the left has a small lid, maybe a couple inches, that comes off. We consider that when you're walking, there's a... Always with this type of, with the small writer. What if you have the also writers of the neighbor, neighbor's stool? Have a small writer.
Is there a closed writer? It's not? It's still open?
You can see it's still open, but there is a...
And is that appropriate?
Yes.
That gets DLB, or it's like that? That gets DOB or something like that? Okay, all right. Okay, well, uh, there's any questions? Otherwise, we're closed. We're hearing the motion. Second, all in favor? Hearing this closed comments?
John, I'm sorry. Um, I think the, uh, COVID, uh, the, uh, has influenced the most here. Um, and I understand the, uh, there was between, uh, this two in Manhattan, if they came to watch what we're repairing this, then, uh, then it would stay metal staircase and, uh, and that would improve the repairs. But here, this is to be replaced. The risk here is not, as testimony suggested, that it would become a garden level entry or a street level entry. Uh, we only have one choice, which is to be, uh, an entry at the level it currently is. It's a question is only whether it's going to be, um, from the chairs, right? If you're replacing the whole thing, if you're going to do that properly, you're going to need something else. Uh, and, and I think the numbers are overwhelming here. You know, this is not a, uh, block where, uh, there are many of these in the city where, uh, you have, you know, five scoops remaining, uh, and the rest are gone. Here, you've got seventeen remaining and two, uh, and only two metal staircases. This is an opportunity, um, for us to, uh, to bring this back, and, and I think we ought to. Uh, so, uh, I don't want to be, uh, replacing it back now.
Other machines are, upon, agree with John. Yeah, one for both.
I think it might better, I mean, with the, with the basic re-scoop, uh, how we, we have to, they're together and lock very hard, you know, and it's, uh, changes, uh, maybe not lots of condition. Uh, I kind of care, I always, I have, uh, care, it must be interesting.
I can understand any questions. Okay, but then is, I, I would agree to replace the system condition, but I'm just wondering if there is also another way to do a scoop, is a solid Masonry scoop that still has the, um, the opening, so that, so that light windows doesn't come through the staircases, but, you know, is still there on the side. Wouldn't it be very simple?
I'd rather get hold of the design for the city, but others?
Commissioner, like, just say that this, we should have approved the reinstallation of metal, uh, but it's a vast amount of repairs, just, just to, but, I think the reasoning there is that there, uh, there are these scoop, and a few gave it tattoos, um, that there is an often, uh, there is, you can see there's, uh, people who do the single road out, and we're in the middle of the road, and it is more light to get below, and that as a general rule, the fact that there is a scoop that recalls these doors, uh, they mentioned in here for a long time, had things sufficient, from the, we should say, taken replacement in time, just to have some comeback on, on the community.
I would add that if we were to require a replacement, uh, historical correctness, as called, um, it would still be, it would still, that, that those last blocks would still be there, the whole layout of the interior would still be there. Uh, it would not really be a complete replacement, I think, but these there's elements that would not really prove consistent. So I think I can somewhat reluctantly go along with the two so far that, like, suggest to, uh, allow, let's get two, yes, and two, four, three, four, to allow.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also in favor of the, uh, you know, letting it be replaced in this case because of the situation where there is some deterioration of the consistent road and the fact there are so many garden level entrances, you know, and there's some, that that they're here, after, and they will not, and they've been there for a long time, and that's, uh, appropriate in a particular instance. Scoops are also be appropriate, but I think this can be.
I agree with the opinion of, of, and I do too, but I guess that places for, is that six, that is six, yeah, okay. I think this is a very interesting issue, and I appreciate the, uh, conversation, the testimony, a lot, and us to have, it's, order one, it's appropriate, and I think the discussion of, of, uh, my, part of what brought me to my position is that, you know, we are tasked with determining whether the action improves the district. And in this case, okay, the patient already has a tumor, and what we seem to be doing is repairing the tumor, replacing the tumor itself, to me, the thing that improves the district is going back.
Whether or not we're saying to improve. I would do expect my idea, that that's not really the standard. The standard's not that we're here to prove it, but that it forces, um, the standard is whether it's appropriate. And I think that in some cases, that may mean that that is something from stats or remains, or remains in general. In other cases, that may mean that things are mitigated better, but as a general standard, um, uh, that's not, the law has required every applicant that be each closer to ensure that it's, it's actually appropriate.
Do you want to read it, or do you like, well, it's a good, yeah. Well, we can, we can, uh, do that. In the matter of LPC 19-39529, block 41 West 8th Street, Upper West Side, uh, Central Park West historic district, the application is to replace a scoop. Uh, open to building styles, scale, materials, and details of nonhistoric features that would be with special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West historic district. The commission also notes that the historic Masonry scoop was removed in the early 20th century and that others later installed. I recommend, I recommend approval finding that a house has been without a Masonry scoop since the early 20th century, although it would not eliminate any significant historic features. It would prove the possibility of, uh, the possible reinstallation of a Masonry scoop in the future, that the replacement scoop will be in keeping with the scoop which originally existed at this house and would remain in historic scoop within the road. In terms of basic size, placement, and orientation, thereby helping recall the presence of the historic scoop and should orientate historic in fine characteristics, uh, characteristic of street state views, uh, or scoop with a simpler design and with the modern metal existing scoops found throughout historic district, including one in the adjacent row house. In terms of materials and finish, thereby helping this scoop to be clearly identified as a modern feature and harmonizing with the street state in historic district, that the limited, slow, um, combination at the rooms will be compatible with the design of the scoop, uh, Jason mentions, and will not, you're not wanting to recognize. All in favor? Approve? To approve. If that's approved, uh, if it is approved, thank you. And here we go to item number nine, this is LPC 20-3051. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the road at block 1129 lot 55, 44 West 77th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West historic district. And the O.G.A. staff, two building designed by Art Short, and built between 1907 and nine. The application is to replace a window.
Good morning, Commissioners, Libby and Nina, Preservation Staff. The item number three, they is 44 West 77th Street. The application is approved on leaded glass window at the non-visible computer courtyard and to replace it with a new one until it's moved out. The subject property is located in 77, uh, West 77th Street between 11th and 12th Avenue and Central Park West, within the Upper West Side, Central Park West historic district. The slide 40 right now, showing the visibility study done by the applicant and to show that area work is not visible from any current view of the repair. The area work is at the portion of the 15 floors of the penthouse apartment. Um, you can see in red right here, the window that they were moving, and the other windows, um, saw, um, within another application of sample, the windows that were being replaced, uh, the LPC pools, which that will rule and will help you there. Here you can see here reviews of what the window look like, framing, as well as the current condition. Uh, you can see the subject window from another angle, as well as some other windows within that, in the courtyard. And then this slide is depicting other windows in the courtyard and showing the subject area one more time. And then the window is not part of established pattern throughout the courtyard, and then there are two other leaded glass windows at the apartment that will be. This slide shows the existing composed elevation of the left side, showing where the window is, and the existing window types. Window, there's, uh, opposing, uh, there's one of the two, other glass, uh, special windows in the area. The applicant, uh, the architect, if there's any questions?
Any questions? Uh, to this testimony? Uh, pass count, Gavin.
Any commissioners on the other Landmark West? Landmark West, the committee of appropriateness committee recognizes that this window is nonoriginal, having been replaced within recent memory. The committee also recognizes that there were at least fourteen other alterations to this penthouse unit's exterior listed on presentation page seven under a second committed with no effect, that have atomized myriad facets of this project to a mirror window. This window, although consistent with at least three of the four windows on the floor directly below it and elsewhere in the courtyard, does not match the nine replaced under semblance of no effect. To suggest a prior change is bare no effect is misleading, because we see the effect, and it is what brings us together today. For greater continuity in one unit, there is a request to reduce overall continuity in an entire courtyard. The committee has seen this before. Each new window typically departs much further towards total change. With the greatest coherence of the courtyard and the landmark, the Landmark West, the committee of appropriateness committee does not support this application.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Diller.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Diller, Chair of Preservation, Committee of Maintenance, seven. Can we put up slide number eight? Thank you. Um, this is, uh, part and parcel of what led us to recommend approval of this. We, um, are always deeply concerned about setting precedent, even when it's not successfully visible in a public way. Here we are, we're all satisfied that it's not visible in a public way, but the ship has already sailed on this. Now if you could go to slide number nine? Thank you. And the lavender shows you the extent of modifications that have already been approved. So the incremental loss of one cobalt blue or whatever color that is, uh, window, uh, led us to believe that this could not be, uh, inappropriate in this context. Um, the, uh, given those two things, that within the integrity of this one apartment and then within the courtyard, um, the idea of preserving this nonhistoric window seems to be, uh, whatever virtue it might have been in that, that should have already sailed. So for that reason, we found it to be reasonably appropriate, and recommended.
Thank you. Um, I'll leave for the record again, therefore, we resolved, the committee of seven in Manhattan approves, the application to remove the non-visible leaded glass window in the interior side courtyard and replace it with the windows that match other replacement windows already approved for this apartment that's reasonably appropriate for the character of this historic district. Anybody else wishing to testify? Do you want to, uh, respond to the testimony?
I comfort, uh, workshop, yeah, we are, that is. We, we thought that this window replacement was reasonably appropriate because of all the other, uh, new replacements in the courtyard. There, there is, uh, there's precedent for new replacements in the courtyard, they may have been considered issue or other applications already been approved, and we consider this replacement to be, uh, appropriate.
Thank you. And, and we know that the window's not original, it has been replaced at some point in time. We don't have the definitive documentation of when that replacement, when that replacement occurred, but, uh, it appears to be within the past decade or so. Thanks so much. All right. Any other questions for the, initially, for, we're hearing to be closed, vote, and second? All in favor? Um, thoughts and comments? Like a sign, like a sign, say over time?
No.
Uh, it's wrong, not visible. Time to go there, it's really safe.
I hope, I'm not here, LPC 20-3051, 44 West 77th Street. Application to replace a window, I recommend approval finding the window is not visible from any public view of the repair. Majority of windows throughout the interior courtyard do not have leaded glass or been replaced. The windows not part of an established pattern, believe the repair. But the two other leaded glass windows were revealed in the apartment will be retained and repaired, and the removal of the window will not detract from the special architectural features or historic character of the door.
All in favor?
All right.
You opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Okay, next is item number 10, LPC 19-22844. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the road at block 1379, lot 17, 25 East 64th Street, and a re-study. Tiny and style west side designed by, uh, the, 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 the application is to utilize installations that are complicated, but with the source of housing.
Good morning, Commissioners, Child, Chicagoian Preservation Staff. 25 East 64th Street is located in the Upper West Side historic district. In the early 20th, uh, century, the commission approved modifications to this building and its two immediate neighbors, including connecting the buildings on the interior, modifying the front and rear sides of the building and to, 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 to. Um, this is an application to utilize, uh, capital for metal, and so, about these permits. Um, it is visible above the rear of the Jason 740 Madison Building, and the architect Lewis Lozowa, Yale Architects, is here to discuss the proposal.
So originally, we had moved to restore all three buildings, uh, which is to the 740 Madison, 25 and 23, uh, 740 Madison was original, uh, and we did a lot of work on it, which made the styrofoam on 23 and 25, and the two floors there was all styrofoam and stucco. So we reached toward to its original, uh, original details, which, uh, which is 23 and the original, uh, south with, uh, 25, many original, uh, uh, stucco, and 1740 last top that's originally here. So the purpose, while we were running this process, we have people to put a CHAC on the OHO level roof, which is right here, which, uh, so, right there was the initiation of the building. The building department did not allow us to do it because of egress, private apartment egress. So the only way we could move it, to move it to the roof top, which we did, the only issue that we came up on, and we had two choices, just to put it in this area, which is visible from 740, from Madison Avenue all the way down. from Madison Avenue all the way down. Or put it in the vault head, which is the adjacent building. And then you can see it from all sides. So we relocated to this area, which allows structure to be secured. And now we can see it looking at some of the internal housing. From every other angle, you can't see it, coming out of Madison Avenue, 64th Street. But you can see it looking into the alleyway. You can see it. So we're trying to get approval for it.
It's a little hard to see, so I recognize you probably. Just, I thought we'd point it out.
So, um, yeah, thanks. If you look, if you look at 740, uh, this is, uh, the building next door, but that's only power, right? You see it down there?
I'm sorry, can you still touch the screen or is, I can't follow it.
Yeah, that's it. Hello. So, looking, so originally, we were supposed to put it quite here. And we moved it up.
That's happening, needs soundproofing.
Yes. That was also, that was also one of the things, the new unit, that reduces the sound by fifty percent. And it's also environmental. So we, we, in some sense, it's a new requirement by the city, although we may hold the same concerns. But it's, as you can look into the alleyway here, it's visible, visible, you are here.
So it's not a verbal requirement, but maybe that.
But we have to move it up there because the fire department requires a six-foot third.
Uh, questions?
Because I always like to hear what the answers are. Why did you do this without LPC permission?
In the LPC, it's, uh, it says that, but it uses, as long as it's not invisible from the alleyway. We said this in the alleyway, that was the requirement. They said because, uh, they would see it, they got specific permission to put it in one location. Yes, which was here, and we couldn't, so.
I think, I think what the Commissioners asked or suggested is, you know, if something like this appeared, you'd come back and talk to say.
We, we went through the, so you know, we had a $5,000 restoration of the facade, examples, samples, and everything. We went through, uh, had the landmark school there, those samples at the site, going up on the scaffold, to those places. And through that process, everything's been approved, with the exception of moving.
That makes it worse.
But I'm just saying, I'm one of those quick wire room. Sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll go to testimony. Jackie Booth, uh, you're going?
Before I speak, I just have a few photos I'd like to share. Sorry for download copies. My name is Jackie Booth Bellin, I live in this neighborhood. I oppose legalizing the HDC unit installed without permit for 25 and 64th Street. The unit is huge and very visible, and was not shown to CMA knowing its approval in 2007. Further, it is a wedding dinner roof, roof line and mess. I was at the Community Board Aid Landmark Committee meeting on July 15th, when this application was presented by the architect. When asked by the community board who the staff person was at LPC handling the application, and what the staff's instructions had been, the architect replied as dissembling and sexist, saying she was a new girl, wasn't sure if this had to be approved at hearing or not, so she was just making a note for the process just in case. I looked up the permit history, the same staff person handled the original application in 2007. He also told the community board members that the location of the HDC unit was not that different from when LPC had actually approved, and that its visibility from the street was minimal. This was misleading. The location approved by LPC in 2007 at hearing was on a low rear roof and blocked by a ballast ring, not the main roof. The architect's comments before the community board engendered doubt in the confidence of this agency and the misleading. I sincerely hope the Commissioners do not reward this bad behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, the Storage District Council. When sweeping like East 64th Street previously from the fourth commission, HDC found that the post-bolke had simply too visible to be appropriate. The Storage District Council remains unchanged in its opposition against proposal to the legalization of rooftop roof without permits, in part due to the extremely unclear Seattle feature of this presentation. As we are unable to make any sense of what this application entails, HDC cannot possibly find it appropriate. Specifically, the addition of labels as to existing versus proposed, or even permitted versus constructed, would go a long way to higher levels being requested by some locations.
Thank you. Next, uh, I have a statement from the Friends of the Upper Side, but I think are not here, is that right? Correct, okay. So I will read their statement, with all the parts of it, at least. Friends of the Upper Side, dismayed that the applicants did not secure the proper permits for the rooftop mechanicals before construction back in 2014. The appearance of the compressor in question is not outright inappropriate in terms of its size, color, and visibility, and in fact, it resembles common rooftop accretions found in the district. However, Friends cannot condone work that is completed without proper permits in buildings in historic districts. We strongly oppose a legalization that sets act first, ask later precedent, as this threatens to degrade our protected buildings and undercut, uh, appropriate, uh, proper procedure. So that's their position. Uh, the position of the community board is as follows. They voted on July 17th, the board voted to approve the application in accordance with the following resolution by vote 39 to 0. Therefore, the result, the second is just approved. Now, uh, positions from testimony. Uh, would you like to respond?
I don't know the first person, because she in my office spoke to her, there's no one spoke to her, or no one, uh, nobody on the application. I know we're sort of active, uh, here, uh, active type. But we took very careful to make sure that the unit would be visible from any view with the exception of this. If you go along Madison Avenue, 64th and everyone, you will see units next to adjacent buildings, and you can see other units, but this one you can't see it. So it's, uh, in the landmarks, it does talk about allowing units to be visible from alleyway. And we sort of, sort of, that essence of reasoning to install some in here, that it will be acceptable. But here we are. It's really the building, uh, over $39 restoration, to bring it to be here for another hundred years. We followed the restoration very carefully and care, we underpinned it. There have been no damage to the building while construction interior team done. So, and we had to reinforce the whole building structurally, because it's here, which, where the unit is placed, there's to be best location, both visually and structurally. So, to, uh, don't know what the other option is, thought to do it.
Let me just pursue that with you. Is there another option?
Unless we repeat it, but I think.
Well, let's go step by step. Is there another option for, please, please?
Structurally, we would have to restructure the whole thing, it's this tenister there, and then it's just, you open it, so. And we have, and we have to go back to fire department. You have, you have, uh, you have staircase, you have elevators, you see there, vault heads. So, I'll be very inclined to do, to do it. And if we relocate it to the front, that's our little bit, it will be noticed from, from Madison Avenue. So if we, you can't put it next to the, if you put on top of the vault head, it could also be visible from all sides of the street. So to relocate, and the reason why we also cannot put it in the lower level, is also the, uh, because of the fire department, and also the building next to it did not exist from the academy. They were able to, they had actually alleyway, building was set back as well. So they build always the property line because they use it more than a lot. It's impossible. Looking at this diagram, it looks like there's an awful lot of space between two units that are being lowered, you were talking about on the page, and that this area is up to push, like, towards the parage, so it's possible to move the unit. I guess that would be best. This unit's there as well.
Oh, so you use the action on the plank?
Yeah, there's.
It's up.
South, I mean, south to the bottom.
To the bottom, yeah.
Yeah, south.
Sorry.
There's, it's there.
It's a primitive chong, right?
And also you have all the duct lines through there as well.
So if you're plumbing and can't be physically moved south, then you can use the other tube.
Because then it's also ventilation, and also.
Right, why do you put that plank there?
Because.
Wouldn't be a problem. How many hours would it take?
Yeah. Because the size of the unit is a regard advantage, especially if you have beams going in and out.
What I think is important to understand, we're not asking you about, you know, this one from a vantage point of, it wouldn't be unpleasant to do it today. But from a vantage point of, hatching the mass mass about it before you did it, what would be the best solution? So, so, saying that, you know, it was done there today, really doesn't address the, 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 the score. So, if this unit weren't here today, wouldn't it possible to plan for its future location further down the building?
Right. If we had moved it further down, would it escape from Madison Avenue south? And then, uh, Jason's point is, you, there is an elevator there, that's a tenant's vault door. And you can actually locate the block of the application, where the unit is, and see it from the.
It is tallying the same height as the vault head.
So, and that would be another issue where you can see it from Madison Avenue, from the other side. There's a picture of the use, there's a picture here.
You see the pointer, the top box.
You can see, you'll be able to see it there, you can see the, uh, yellow edge. What, do you saw here?
Or turn on its stuff.
If you look at it, you have.
Or rotate it ninety degrees, that, so that it's less visible in the alley, or catch that against the, to.
Will be less visible, I can't say it, but it would be less visible.
Yes, if you know that, that can do it.
Uh, you have the, you have the material completed by the tenants, not relevant, right? You have, uh, you have penetrations on the roof that all the dark goes through. You have shafts going all the way down. It would take, uh, major, I mean, I mean, really.
Okay, let's just table that, not reading necessarily those tables. What else could you do to make it less visible, less?
The only thing I can see is to do something on the side of the unit, here. So that it will look like it's part of the, uh, paint of the color, which is the same color as the vault heads, here. So it looks like it's part of a.
You mean putting a shield or fence or something? A screen?
I was guessing about the screen, to make the unit all, all closed. Put some kind of board onto the unit.
So, because of the density, you can't put a screen?
I'm just concerned about, is it always, that's the issue, we ask, whether the Landmark's asking for some kind of screen or something? If we go back, any, anyway, what do you do? Even, uh, potentially, a crystal screen that's, that's created for justice purpose? Are there such things? Just put that in the screen? And I just, I just have to see what the specifications are, I don't want to say.
Are, are we?
It's only two foot six, I can go along, you can get the, 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 close to it, but it's not there.
Okay, are we now in a position, which is that we can accept the location?
We're supposed to hear, I don't know if we're here.
So, all right, I'll ask the person. And second, all favor? So, pursuing. But I just wanted to first, to be sure that it's a position, it sits at a level with the central location, as opposed to moving it, that it may act of, uh, that's a, and for you to launch a screening or something like that. Is it possible to do a screen?
I just want to connect you. In the consolidation, we're moving it south. All possible, just not to say, uh, cumbersome. We didn't work, I think, uh, significantly on that.
I think the first page actually, the video, they chose, they used a little bit better, it's like, uh, the. And just me, it shows everything that's been, uh, been through.
From a street perspective.
I did want to add, uh, just a little more context with what the Commissioners approved of the original project. It did include, uh, one, not two vault heads, visible at a greater distance over the primary street signs. They were typically at the sort of, into the finish. So there is part of the overall project to, in that case, the acceptance of some visible objects over the top of the building. Again, those were over the primary street signs, in contrast to this, which is, uh, will hopefully gap you in the primary, uh, hours.
And it was there, were they built?
There were new, new features as part of the.
Are they there?
Yes, they're there, sorry. Just a diagram.
What do you want me to say, is visible, is it visible from the south?
And, and who is the brother that don't have, uh, that?
Okay, uh, I think so, any of these? Positions, I understand it is, uh, screening is not enough, we want, the other people have that. Concept of the screening, what it is, I think, the details of the screen, we related to, or to the set. Uh, are the rest of the Commissioners okay with that? I think that could be, that would make the six of us. All right. So, uh, and, uh, read this one.
Landmark LPC 19-2844, 25 East 64th Street, Upper South Street. The application is to legalize the installation of rooftop mechanical equipment without Landmark's provision of commission permits. I recommend approval. The complications, mine, the door has not damaged or eliminated significant architectural features. That visible alternative proportions to the flint tower, thus visible within twenty four years, cannot be added. That the flint tower is seen from, see only from other factors, from many of the views, or rear facade, and within, most proximity to the taller peak of the building, helping the installation to remain a secondary presence within the space scale. And that the presence of the flint tower within use.
And that the presence of the pylon tower within view of the limited gap between buildings is not patrolling this area of the building or street space to the west. However, although the utility and design in the captive metal finish of the pylon tower are seen with four三层 layers above decorative architectural features in the end of the sky, and are not permitted of the street in this contest. Therefore, I recommend that in consultation with the commission staff, the applicant install a senior design suite into the hallway for whatever needs to finish.
One favor. And the opposed, who opposed, for this passes, uh, with the screening option, what do you care what it says?
Okay, we're going to move to Public Meeting items for the last three of the day. The first is, uh, one, LPC twenty dash zero one one three one. Application for amendment for open avenue lot four ninety-eight, lot seventy-five one, ninety-third street, the Soho House Iron Store District. A lot closed on my level that until fifteen twenty-eight to nine o'clock. The application is to amend the master plan covering the future installation of the building.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I am Reno Preservation Staff. The item for you is ninety-third street and Soho House Iron Store District. The building is located on the south side of the square we were served on. The proposal is to answer to the amendment nineteen dash three one seven five, which is our, our master plan, which is full sign, it's a western song. The proposed amendment is to modify the criteria for the sign by adding a dimension of two inches to the size of the corner, eliminating the content criteria, adding the component, the real estate, the... So here it is, and here are some examples of signs on the building, and things to be considered.
If this wasn't clear, the, uh, this, this is an approved master plan, already approved the location of the sign, the presence of the sign. This is both just to establish that it's more flexible criteria, and it was recently modified.
And there's no variation from how we move, more flexible standards.
Okay, comments, what are we thinking? Us, us thinking. Thinking you made a good decision in changing the criteria, that this matches those criteria on the concrete.
I think we're, yeah, the criteria we thought were good again, so.
I think there's some consensus out there, okay.
So, moving back to John.
In matter of document number LPC twenty dash zero one one three one. Ninety-third street and Soho House Iron Store District, the application should have been matched by a government future installation, fixed to all signs. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details installed on the features contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho House Iron Store District. I recommend approval, going at twice minimum size of the sign, and confident remains subordinate presence of the building within the street scale, regardless of the type of graphics or number of colors used within the body of the sign. But the sign will include two inch solid painted water in the white contrast that accompany the sign. A typical feature of historic wall signs that a vendor tag will have a set location in the lower left-hand corner beneath the sign, and will be no larger than thirty-six point twenty inches. And then the revised overwork is in keeping with the intent of the original approval.
One favor. And the opposed, opposed, it's approved.
Okay, we'll move to Public Meeting item number two, LPC twenty dash zero one one three zero. Uh, application for amendment, open avenue lot six forty-three, lot fifty, set eight thirty, eighth street, Soho Market District. The apartment building is located in Seaworth, built in nineteen eighty-one, application is to amend the master plan about the future installation of all signs. We will walk you through the highlights, but this is the same...
Good afternoon, commissioners, I am National Transportation Preservation Staff. The application before you is eight thirty, Front Street, and apartment building located on the west side of Front Street, which means Gannor, Bridge Street, and the Gannor Boardman, the Star District. The proposal before you is to amend the certificate appropriate then nineteen three one five two feet. Issue in for the two to approve established ten year master plan for repeated all signs, located at the north side. The proposed amendment again is to modify the criteria for the sign by adding a dimension of two inches, eliminating the content restrictions within the free sign space, and then adding a vendor tag beneath that floor. This elevation shows the previously approved dimensions with the vendor tag added. And these are additional views from the primary storage facility. The opposite side, any questions?
Oh, once again, can you confirm that this is a complete reliance with the group guidelines?
Yes, it matches.
In the matter of LPC two zeros, number one one three zero, eight thirty, ten inches street, Times Road Market District. The apartment building is located in Seaworth, Turpin, built in nineteen eighty-one, the application is to amend and master the plan governing the future installation of the wall signs. And with style, scale, materials, and details of the building among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Gannor Boardman Store District. And I would recommend approval, the placement, the size of the sign, the quality of the main, a subordinate presence of the building, and within the street scale, regardless of the type of graphics or number of colors used within the body of the sign. But the sign will include two inch solid paint quarter, being a black or white pressed with the content of the sign, a typical feature of historic wall signs. The vendor tag will have a set location in the left, uh, at the lower left-hand corner beneath the sign, and will be no larger than thirty-six point twenty inches. And if the revised scope of the words and keep the content of the original approval.
Okay.
Okay, last, uh, last item of the day, Public Meeting item number three, LPC one nine dash two zero zero seven nine. Application for a certificate for legalizing the roadblock on lot twenty-one, twenty-one, lot twenty-one, three fifty-two to three sixty, Claremont Avenue, the fourth community store district. Uh, this is a apartment lot garage, the application is to demolish the garage and construct five row houses. Uh, this is lots presented, public meeting, April thirtieth, from the, no actions taken.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I am New Zealand Preservation Staff. Three fifty-two, three sixty, Claremont Avenue is located on the west side of Claremont Avenue between Montgale and Green Avenue, is the fourth community store district. Uh, the proposal is to demolish a mid-twenty century garage facility and construct five row houses, and two rented current garages inside basement double in features of separate triangles and curvings. Uh, when this site was first heard in the public hearing, public meeting of April thirtieth, the proposal consists of five row houses featuring four garages and two shared, uh, triangles. Commissioners are supportive of the demolition of the existing garage building and constructions, and the construction scale and aspect of the new row, row houses, including a contemporary design approach from the buildings. However, some commissioners raised questions about the appropriateness of the control of garages or digital houses in this district. Other commissioners had concerns about the size, scale, and location of the old interior windows, uh, and the overall penetration, and requested that these aspects of the design be studied. In response, the total height of the five row houses has been reduced by one foot to better match the neighboring row houses. Instead, brickwork has been added to the roof to provide additional articulation to the sign. Uh, two of the garages have been eliminated, and the pattern of the stoops has been made with oral ceiling. The garage doors naturally trained the reason, and the size, scale, uh, the size and scale of the Oriole Bay windows has been modified. In reducing the total height, the Oriole by twelve inches, the Oriole is now centered in the second of the floor penetration, and the walls of the Oriole Bay and entrance are now aligned. Brendan Over, the CMBB architects, is here to walk us through the changes.
Hello, Commissioner, Brendan Over, to present, uh, revisions to the Claremont Rowhouse project. I think James did a pretty good job responding to the things, I'm not sure how much more I can add, other than, um, based on the criticism we received from the previous meeting. Uh, the primary issue is really seems to be the garage, it's been rise to doubling up the Orioles, because we have, uh, we have only a lot of two curb cuts, so these two zoning lots. Um, so that had been sort of interplay of the day, how the Orioles and garages were the things that drove the, the bunching up of the, of the windows. So we went back to our clients, said, look, this is what the, seems to be the primary objection, uh, from the commission to this, uh, to this proposal. And what we really would suggest that he do is, uh, deep two curb cuts and have two garages, because with that, we can go to a more regular, uh, row house type configuration for every one of them. It's the same as not making a situation, it's a AKA, um, the stoops not lined up. Uh, the garage has moved to the, uh, these two positions, which gives us, you know, three nice planted areas and part together, three row houses. Um, so the iron work around the garage also now becomes a little bit easier, and less extensive running across the front of the shop. We also responded to, um, some commissioners were talking about, the sort of articulation and size, the relationship of the, uh, original bay window being sort of off the grid of the upper floors. Um, again, that was something that was being driven by sharing the curb cut. So once we were able to, uh, go down to, uh, these two garage, to four, we were able to, to now create center line for the garage, do a window up through these windows, up this, this margin grid. And then up the windows, and then have the watches a little bit up the last, and then the garage doors themselves. Uh, and then this sort of being grid, uh, corollary around the windows. That's it.
Good, thank you, Brendan. Other questions? I'm not sure, it's still very, very old. Come on, who wants to go first? Brendan, you want to go?
Um, these are the, um, nice improvements to have been, are already, interesting design. Um, I think that, any of the, just two of the garages in the, in the regular AKA, um, definitely helps. And the, the lining of the Oriole, the, the, it certainly means we need very, um, nice proportions to, 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 to.
Okay. Okay, um, elimination of two of the garages. Now, it is unusual to have a garage, a garage at all. Assuming that people might be, uh, happy to have jealous, and maybe they're going to be like, uh, I think it is an inappropriate thing to find out approval. Yes, one question. It's personal, others don't agree with mine, so of course, I would suggest the garage doors. So the garage doors, because I don't know, they might explore a more hard organization, maybe perish, style, or, I don't know, it's a, it's a, uh, suggestion.
I, I also think the two is a good, I, I sort of, I think the previous base had a slight proportion, a slight need better. Uh, it's more vertical, it's, um, thinner and taller, I don't know, I just think the proportion of the previous base somehow related better to the proportion of windows and the buildings generally. But I think in the end, the, the benefits achieved by the changes are probably more, talking about it.
I think I could agree with that last comment about the height, I would say the height. I would like slightly higher, but, uh, the overall reduction of the height of the buildings, and the change of the garages and so forth. I actually think garages and, uh, spats in Brooklyn are very typical. And just without new construction, so we could be approving that one, if we're, uh, with that, uh, if you see it from, uh, uh, this new construction, so. And now we're going now, it's been redesigned, uh, we did it five days in a row. All right, let's see, where are we for you?
In matter of... Uh, thank you. In matter of the subject of appropriateness for a program, LPC nineteen two zero zero seven nine, three fifty-two to three sixty, Claremont Avenue, fourth community store district. Apartment lot garage, application is to demolish the garage and construct five row houses. I note that the site was formerly occupied by row houses that were demolished prior to designation in nineteen seventy-eight. I also note that the surrounding street state features a mix of three-story plus basement Italian-style row houses with brick and brownstone facades of four stories and five and seven story, ten story residences built in nineteen thirty. But four new row houses at three seventy dash three seventy-four, seven avenue, ten three forty-eight, nine avenue, were approved by the commission in twenty sixteen, and are under construction. And the site is a great street from half of recreational grounds, a bishop, bishop block, no more than a store. I find that the existing modern garage is not a building which the historic district has designated. I recommend approval, finding that the existing modern garage does not contribute to historic district, and its demolition will not detract from the special architectural and architectural and historic character of the historic district. The construction of new row house building, counting the garage site, and they mock will reinforce the street wall, filling the laps away along nine avenue, and thereby enhancing the street scale. With the general scale and massing of proposed bones, it falls to heights of the adjacent buildings and other row houses in the block. With the simple clean lines of the side details in proposed brick, brownstone, and speckle, cast stone, and your cells. And the dark painted metal material top, harmonized with the historic nineteenth century row house technology characteristic of the street scale. The replacement of the building for maintaining historic row house street. And the proposed three-day log transmation were evolved in phenomenal manner, while three days' long log has its industry state in throughout the historic district. That the proportions, configurations, um, operation, and materials, if they're dark, finished with a single light piecement, those are all available. Will be a complimentary touch back to the historic windows from historic buildings in the street scale, and will reflect a contemporary design of this simple of buildings. That the metal railings and screens of the stupid areaway recall historic ironwork found in these locations and historic buildings in the district. That the garages are well integrated with this design of the houses. That the presence of the two garages within this row of the blocking buildings will not call new attention to itself within the street scale. That the bulkets are to look of replacement of mechanical equipment that's reared with property of upscale to buildings. That the building projection into the rear yards is in keeping with both the facing row houses. That the section of the rear portion of the buildings will recall the massing of row houses in the block, and the design and materials of the rear precise, hardly existing scale character of individual row houses. And the proposed buildings, showing the special architectural and historic character of this historic district.
Second, one favor. You opposed? It's approved.